Regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting 6:00 PM, Wednesday, August the 4th, 2021, City Hall complex. I call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Donald Clark, will you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in my heart, invincible through the victories of our law.
Thank you very much. First of all, we should take a picture of this, John. This is the first time we've had people in the chamber and happy to say, people without mask. And hopefully, this would be something that we see from now on. We haven't been on the dais for over a year. This is the first time. So take a good look at these faces. This is the most, the prettiest people in Nogales up here.
Wow.
And some of the directors are also good looking and pretty girls and stuff. But this is nice. I like to see this. Okay. So we're going to start with call to the public. And we have one speaker for him. And that's Darin, is it? No, okay. Darren Venters, is that what it is? Yes. Please come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Darren Venters. I'm the chair emeritus of the Employer Support for the Garden Reserve in Arizona. I live at 1374 East Stronghold Canyon Lane in Salerita, 85629. So great. I'm honored to be here tonight. Tonight, we have two presentations to make to your police department. The first is a reaffirmation of the statement of support that was signed on December 11th, 2020, and ESGR's Pro Patria, excuse me, Pro Patria Award. The Statement of Support Program is a cornerstone of ESGR's effort to gain and maintain employer support of the Garden Reserve. The intent of the program is to increase employer support by encouraging employers to function as advocates for employee participation in the military. Supportive employers are critical in maintaining the strength and readiness of the nation. The first statement of support was signed on December 13th, 1972, in the office of the Secretary of Defense by the Chairman of the Board of General Motors. Excuse me. President Richard Nixon was the first president to sign that statement of support. And in 2005, every federal cabinet member had signed the statement of support, all federal agencies, to signify their continuing effort to be model employers. Since its inception, hundreds of thousands of employers have signed the statement of support, pledging their support to the Garden Reserve employees. Employers signing the statement of support pledge that we fully recognize and honor and apply with Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Act. We provide our managers and supervisors with the tools they need to effectively manage their employees who serve in the Garden Reserve. We appreciate the values and the leadership and the unique skills that the service members bring to the workforce and will encourage opportunities to hire guardsmen, reservists, and veterans. We will continue to recognize and support our country's service members, their families in peace, in crises, and in war. And you have aptly demonstrated that in every aspect. So we thank you. And on behalf of the National Chairman of the Employer Support and Garden Reserve, we thank you. Sharing an employee with the nation is not always easy. Work schedules are disrupted, some with very short notices, like when Sergeant Perez was deployed to help disperse the riots in Wisconsin not long ago. Folks like Sergeant Perez have to maintain the same standards and the same rigorous training that your active-duty counterpart. So that's, that's an additional burden on the individual and on yours and your department when you lose somebody out of your, out of your crew for a while. The ESGR's Pro Patria Award is presented annually by the ESGR State Committee to an employer in the state. Recipients have demonstrated the greatest support to Garden Reserve employees through their leadership and practices, including adopting personnel policies that make it easier for employees to participate in the Garden Reserve. This is the highest award that may be bestowed by the Arizona Employer Support for the Garden Reserve. And you are eligible to receive that, that award. So it's an honor to present you with the Employer Support Patriot Award to Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
First of all, should this show this to the city council?
Very nice.
Policies and everything that wants us to send our reserve to serve our nation.
Thank you.
And it just so happens that I'll have another one just like this for you that you can just play wherever you'd like to do that. Okay? This is the Statement of Support. And this is a reaffirmation of one that was signed in 2020, December 2020. After we knew these things ever now and then, just keep us.
There you go.
Very nice.
Chief? Thank you, sir. Our pleasure. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. One other comment. Sergeant Perez also nominated as a police officer in the Secretary of Defense Patriot Award. And later on, you will be heard to present that award, which is the highest award given to civilian employers by the Secretary of Defense. So you are one of 15 in the nation. When we go back, represent that. Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Very nice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
That's all we have?
This is what we have.
That's all, that's all we had for?
That's all for the public? Okay. Number four, financial monthly report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have our finance director, Jean. She's here to give the finance report. I also emailed you this report and her comments earlier in the week. And I hope all of you received it and were able to, to look at it and chief.
And if you printed the one that was, that was emailed, it's in color. The one I just did right now, it's not. I'm sorry. So tonight, I'm presenting to you the fiscal year 2021 preliminary June financial report. This report includes a financial status summarization for the general fund departments and for the sales tax. And again, we're still in the process of closing 2021, so these are just preliminary numbers. Your first table is Table B, which is your sales tax. And being again, preliminary numbers, they could be different next month. We collected in June $1,369,239, which is higher than June of '20 by $828,341. And we ended the 2021 year higher than 1920 by a difference of $282,161. And we ended the year of 2021 $985,920 above our budgeted amount projected for the sales tax for the 2021 fiscal year. Your second table is Table C. And that is our general fund expenditures per department. So this expenditures was based off of July 30th date for the pending of the 2021 close. There's still some outstanding POs that we're waiting for invoices for. Hopefully, we can get everything wrapped up soon. And we, if you look at the chart, we have two departments that have gone over their annual budget. But both of them are not by very much at this point. The first one is the cemetery, which we knew we would go over. We had to hire the outside caretakers, and we also under budgeted last year. And the second one was Nogales Rides, which can be attributed to the COVID vaccine clinic, which is in the process of being reimbursed from the county to us. So at this point, we're looking at only 66% of the overall budget being used at this point for the close of the year. We should have, by the end of August, beginning of September, we should have everything closed up. Are there any questions?
Can you explain why, why the numbers on the sales tax on, on Table B? Why we are at that, that rate or that height? What do you think was attributed to that?
Hoping we had a really good month. If you kind of look across, even our bed tax was much higher. So.
I noticed that.
Overall, I'm, a lot of people spent a lot of money in Santa Cruz County. I did.
We had the stimulus check.
Yes, a lot of stimulus.
We had a lot of businesses. A, a lot of people not willing to travel. So they were staying home. I think if you lived in the community, probably saw Home Depot was like wall to wall. So, you know, we had a lot of people spending a lot more money, I believe, locally. And then we had the influence, the workers working the Mariposa project. So I think a combination with all of that, the stimulus check, people staying home or locked down at home, spending their money at home, spending their money online on, you know, on Amazon. We still get the sales tax for that. I think another, another boost to possibly our sales tax was our Mexican shoppers spending their money online with a destination of the city of Nogales.
Okay.
Also, because they weren't able to travel into the interior to buy goods and services. So they were buying online but having it shipped to a local address, a mailbox or, or the FedEx or the, or the, which are the ones at the Circle K? Somebody know the one? There's a million lockers at the Circle K, the new Circle K. I think that were FedEx or Amazon homes those lockers that you can buy and pick up there. So I think there was a lot of factors into why our sales tax did well. I'd be cautious that, I think it's, that, that high we're riding off on the sales tax might be short-lived. The country's opening back up. People are traveling more, business, more businesses are opening. So, you know, I'd be cautious going forward. I don't, I don't see our, our sales tax, hopefully, doing as well, but there, there's always a chance.
It'd be nice if we had these numbers come during the season.
Could you imagine these same numbers, these, the same of activity with a fully open border? I think we would have done very, very well, but.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's, it's, it's good to see, but, you know, it probably benefits only certain, certain businesses, not, you know, not the downtown area.
No.
But I mean, it's, it's, it's good. It's good to see this, you know.
And then plus, we, as far as the expenditures, we truly put the brakes on a lot of expenditures last year because we weren't sure of what was going to happen. So we totally eliminated a lot of travel, a lot of training, a lot of capital purchases. We put the brakes on a lot of things. I think we're making up for it this year, though.
Yeah.
I think we're making up for it tonight. If you look at the agenda tonight, we're making up for the capital tonight.
A lot of those capital things, yeah.
Yeah. We'll be purchasing some stuff.
Yeah, some big ones.
Some big ones, I know. But that's good to see.
Yes.
I think the whole state's seen the economy booming right now, so I think it's a good thing.
It's good numbers.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Number five, executive session. There are motions to go into executive session. Second. All right. So we'll be going to executive session and we'll be going in there. So.
So Department Directors, I'm going to close out this meeting. And when we come back out of executive session, I'll start it again for those of you who are joining us online, for you that are here joining us hanging loose. We'll, we'll get to you soon here. We'll be right out. Mike, do we need Mr. Pass?
Yes.
Do we need the fire chief also?
Motion can reflect that Mr. Pass will join us.
Okay.
Do we need the fire chief also?
I haven't, no. Good evening, Mayor, Council members. I just wanted to let you know that the tentative start date for the library trolley program is Wednesday, September 8th. Just need to, I just need to finish up a few details with John and Mary Darlene, Jr. And just find out from you where you want us to start. And we're all, we're set.
Well, that, and also I was gonna ask, I think the best thing, you can look for locations, and then you can stay there for a few hours, is that what you're gonna do it?
Correct.
Yeah. And, and, and there's certain locations that, that, that you can go like, for instance, if you were go, if you were to go like to Montecarlo City the first time, you can park it at Las Cancas, you know, Sonora? Or you can park it at the other park over there on that. And then, you can even park it, the future Bonilla Park. So, just as an inside joke. Altrinidad, on that little wedge park. It's a nice area, but that one doesn't have any parking if you have kids. But, but it's to attract the kids from that neighborhood, you know? And, and, and you can just find locations, and if you, if, for instance, if you go do it on the street, like Elm Street, the best thing to do is, is, is park it where it's accessible for the kids to go to, and it's not restricted to any circulation traffic. And that, that's the only thing I think that best thing to do. And, and you're gonna do some publicity first?
Of course. That's, that was my next question. If we wanted to advertise, do a publicity, get the international there, and go from there too. Of course.
I would say that you're gonna start it, give out the date, like you say right now. That would be the first publicity. Start with that, and, and then, and then even mention location at the time. Whichever ones you think could be best. And everything about it, John and I were talking about is that the trolley, since you're not gonna be transporting or moving people in it, you really don't need anybody to sit there. I don't think you do, huh, John? Or do you?
I, I don't believe so, Mr. Mayor, but we have, we, we have staff that can make sure we get the trolley to, to location. Yeah, we'll take care of that. I think we, the, one of the small obstacles that we have is the NITA needs, possibly some additional software and hardware to be able to check out the books from the trolley. But we're gonna be working closely with MIS and possibly the police department to see if we can free up some funding to take care of that.
You doing some library cards, something?
Yeah, we want, and all that is wireless, we just need to work that out. Because that's, September's also like National Library Card signup month, so we wanna do that too. And that'd be perfect.
So, we're, we're going to establish a needs list and a budget, and then we'll, we'll, we'll work very hard to seek the funding.
And that'd be perfect.
So we're, we're, we're going to establish a, a needs list and a budget. And then we'll, we'll, we'll work very hard to seek the funding to make sure that we accomplish that. And there's several avenues that we can use to try to get the funding.
Wherever you need to get it going, you know, we have support from the council.
Thank you.
It's, it's something that's good to, and let's see if we can be successful there.
And we will, it's, it's great, I mean literacy and getting, getting it out to the kids, I think it's great.
Trolley, it is an attraction and, and it's got good seating for the kids in there. And, you know, you can have somebody there helping them to read, too.
Of course, yes. And we're gonna be fully staffed by the end of this month, so we're good. So, and I wanna thank you all for this opportunity, it's a great opportunity, I'm excited. So yay.
You know, and, and it's, it's, it's not a very good place to put it on a commercial road. Okay, I don't recommend that. Or don't take it to downtown, but you're not gonna get any kids going. Take them to the neighborhoods. Maybe later, you know, when, when you have something that's really moving along and, and everybody's aware of it. Then we can select locations, you know, that are, that are parts, like for instance, back here. A great part to have it, you know, places like that. And, and you can even take it to a baseball game or a soccer game. And as when the little kids that are not playing can, can go by the, by the trolley and, and go out there and read. Check out a book or something like that.
Yeah, no, it's great, I think it's great.
It's a great asset, it's gonna be a good asset, it's gonna be an addition to your library.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mayor.
Are, are you working with the school district or advertising with the school district so you can help us out on that?
I will, because we're gonna start up again with the school, um, the Library Card signup project since school started again. So we're gonna, I will be doing that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, number seven, discussion items. Discussion, direction, and possible action, donation of thirty-five unusable garbage bins. Sixty-five gallon bins to Casa Vida Nueva para, para niños. AC Carretera Internacional, kilómetro dieciocho, camino a la escondida, en hogar de Sonora. This is our second, discussion. Mr. Bonilla, or Mr. Christian, go ahead.
This is what staff's looking for is council's direction to allow us to proceed with this donation. If we find that we might not be able to do this donation because of legal matters. We will either be bringing it back for you for acquisition to do possibly an auction. But if we can legally donate this, that's what we're asking you to give us a permission to get it up tonight. We have thirty-five of these cans. These are the cans that are broken. We all have our cans at home, it's that little piece of pipe that goes in front of it so it can hook on to the back of them. That, that has broken off so that rendered it useless for us to be picking up. So we've replaced them with a milk can. And so they're sitting at the yard, and you do have a thirty-five can. And Mr. Yanina has to contact the orphanage in, in Mexico to get them to them. And they would take delivery of these cans here in Leguas. Works and be responsible for taking them, what have you, if they're in position. And I don't know if Mr. Bonillas would want to add on to the, a little bit on the need. He knows more about the, the contact and the need, why they need these cans.
And is there a cost?
There's no cost to us to donate.
No, no, the cost of the cans that we can.
The, the value of the cans?
And yeah, value.
Strap value, Mr. Bonilla.
Okay, perfect.
I believe it's insignificant.
We won't use them, we wouldn't use them anyway. And nobody could use them, okay, perfect. All right, Mr. Bonilla, you have something to say?
No, it's just that, um, this is a center for abandoned children. There's a, there's children with no, they're orphans. Uh, they're children that are, that were actually picked up because they were either taken away by their parents, by either drug problems, domestic violence or whatever and whatnot. But the issue is that the whole area is almost six to eight acres large. And what happens is that this organization, Vida, the Casa Vida Nueva. They belong to a, a certain denomination, which is the Church of God. And what happens, all summer months, they have the youth camps there. And the, the, the trash is, it's, it's out of control. They need some way to control and, you know, and, and people can deposit the trash there because there's tents that are being set up or throughout the, the property in summer. So it's not one time, it's, it's all summer. They bring in different organizations to have their youth camps there. And so I asked, I asked Mayor and Council to, for your support on, on this.
Okay, Mr. Massey?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, do I, Mr. Massey?
John, how many of these cans do we have at, at the yard? Is there a bunch of them? What do we do with them if we don't donate?
Yeah, there's a bunch of them. Hector, I don't have a count, Alejandro, do you have a count?
There are more than a hundred.
Oh, yeah.
There are, we've got hundreds of them.
For years, I've seen them there, yeah.
We've been, mm-hmm. There's a possibility that they'll collect them for recycling, right?
They have contacted vendors to see if there's any, any value for recycling that. They, they say that there's no value because the transportation is more expensive than what they recover from the thing. And they would say, you bring it to us, we recycle it.
Oh, God.
So to make, to, to, to answer the question, Hector, the, the, there's no real value in them. To sell them or anything like that unless, unless we decide that we wanna auction them off. And I don't know if there's a community that could use them or whatever, but we can look at that to repurpose them. Maybe there's, there's a, a garbage collection, uh, uh, company out there that would like to bid on a hundred cans. And we can explore those ideas also. But having the company come down, pick them up, and recycle them hasn't panned out.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause they're, they're just collecting dust, they're so.
Yeah.
That's absolutely right.
I, I have a question. Why just sixty-five of you have a hundred? Why don't you give them all? I'm sorry, why only thirty-five?
Because that's, that's on the.
But if, if, if Mayor and Council, let me, I can, I can, we can find places for, for all of them. You know, it doesn't, I have, I didn't know how, how, how many.
There's a whole bunch of them, just sitting there. Have you seen them?
Well, um.
Well, that's a question.
Okay, uh, I just wanna be careful because, and, and, and Mr. Bonilla can, can relate my concerns. When he first came to me, I said, I said, Mr. Bonilla, I, I'm comfortable in recommending to Mayor and Council donate these cans to an orphanage that's not close to our community. And they're getting them out of here.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd be very cautious about donating these cans or selling these cans to anybody close to our community. Because the problem with that is that these are the City of Leguas garbage cans. And when our trucks go around, they don't ask the can if you're paying your account or you have a water account or not. They just pick it up. So if we have a lot of cans out there where people pick up and don't open up an account with the City of Leguas. Then we're gonna be losing revenues because we look at those cans as something that we pick up. I was also contemplating, and I, and I would recommend to Mayor and Council, let's just go with the thirty-five first and see how it works out before we get too excited and donate too many other ones. And then I was also gonna ask Alejandro if it would be possible, before they pick up those donations, that we can somehow deface the cans in a way that we can know that these are cans that are out of service. And I'm not real sure how we can do that, but it's something we can contemplate doing. Like maybe, I don't know, grinding off the city seal or, or something along those lines. I, I'm not sure, Alejandro, I haven't even had this conversation. But I just caution Mayor and Council, maybe we wanna be, be a little bit more cautious about just getting rid of all of them.
Okay, Mr. Massey, legal part?
Yes, sir. The normal rule is to separate the, any property from the city. It's through an auction or some other commercially reasonable manner. But in this situation where there's really negligible value, the procurement code makes the city manager. John, the procurement code makes the city manager the, what's called materials, uh, inventory manager. And so with proper documentation, which will attach to the, the minutes of this meeting, which shows that, you know, how long that the bins have been idle, that there's no commercial value to them, that there's a, a use for them, you know, at a, at an appropriate distance. And that, I think that's within the discretion of the city manager as his authority, as the materials manager.
Okay, perfect. With that, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? The ayes have it, thank you very much. B, discussion, direction, possible action, an order of twenty twenty dash zero nine dash zero five one. Amending city charter of the personnel manual regarding overtime. Mr. Bonilla?
Chapter.
Chapter, oh, chapter seventeen, yeah. Amending overtime, Mr. Bonilla, busybody.
Yeah, I get the easy ones. About a year ago, um, it was brought to light by a former councilman about the issue of the unfunded liability. I have done extensive research. And as a matter of fact, yesterday, I, I spent a couple of hours on a Zoom meeting with Mr. Mike Townsend. He is the head of the PS, PRS for the state of Arizona. What I found out is that it, it is a very complicated subject. Everything changes every year. We don't, we don't, we don't tend to just say, this is gonna happen. We have to sort of, I like to use the word guess, but nothing really is, is a, we really don't know what's gonna happen at this point. But what I did find out, or I have learned, is that there are ways that city council, that mayor and city council can work to fix this problem. Yes, we are, I think currently the last numbers I saw was like thirty-six million dollars that we have in unfunded liability. But capping the employees of the city is not really gonna alleviate this problem. Uh, there's bigger issues, a lot of things are, are moving at the same time. I believe that the, the directors of each department can and are able to manage their own overtime. It, it, this, uh, this, uh, order, uh, chapter seventeen has affected more other departments than others. And I wanna just touch real briefly, especially with the police department. You know, there is a, a belief that the more overtime they put in, you know, that their pensions are gonna go up. Currently, there's the Stone Garden Grant. That's, that funds the City of Leguas one hundred percent. Yes, does it affect, at the end of the day, are, are the pensions of the police officers? Absolutely. But right now, if we look at the fire department, uh, there's no cap right there. But they say, well, they're short-staffed, and they are very short-staffed. But it's the same, it's the same problem. We're not, we're not, we're, it's not, I can't even say that capping the employees is a Band-Aid because it's not even that. I think that the, the police chief can, can manage his overtime. Uh, I move that, that, uh, that this be removed. And we start working as, as, as a team to figure out this issue with the unfunded liability. Cause I think it's, it affects, I don't think we can fix this on the backs of, of, of the employees of, of the City of Leguas. I don't think it's fair. This problem, we, we, like, as Billy Joel said, we didn't start the fire. But we do have to start taking or making decisions to fix this problem, to alleviate it. But putting a cap on employees, I don't think that's the way of, of, of going about this, uh, this problem. Yes, I, I like to be transparent with, with, with Mayor and, and council members. It, it does affect, it, it will make their pensions a little bit bigger. But, um, at this point, what's owed technically is, is already there. We cannot get rid of it. We can pay it down, but it's still there. And we may have caps of the thirty percent with city employees. But I believe that it is best that we let our directors and hold them accountable for their overtime. They know as well as us, than anyone else, that if they can't handle their, their overtime, it's gonna affect their budget for next year. So with that, I leave for discussion.
Yeah, now, John, can I have Mr. Thompson on the podium and the finance director?
Sure.
Both? First of all, I need to ask you a couple of questions. I've had a conversation with the councilman about this. I had a conversation with John about it. And I've always been the type of person, even when I was a director, that I had to manage the overtime of that department. And I was very good at it, by the way, okay? Because I didn't allow personnel in, in public works to do that. Because I went to the job sites to make sure that the right amount of people were working for the type of job that was being done. Not just show up five or six employees when you only need two. I like to say that our directors are like that too, but I haven't seen that, okay? So I need you as finance director to tell me, how can we pay this down? And we have thirty-five years to pay it. And we're not gonna be around, but somebody else is gonna be around. And then I need you, Mr. Thompson, to tell me, what's the difference between the, the cap that we have right now and not having the cap? We'll start with you.
Start with me. To pay it down, we have to start paying it down. This past year, when we did our, um, paying the PSPRS at the beginning of the year, we actually had about three hundred and eighty thousand dollars left over that went towards that unpaid amount. Doesn't seem like a lot, but every penny does count somewhere. But we have to figure out how we can do that, really as a city. And I can tell you, well, this is what our amount is, this is what we're gonna give them. Oh, look, we gave them an extra twenty thousand. Well, twenty thousand's not gonna go anywhere. I think as a council and the mayor and all of us directors, we need to figure this out together. Where can we get this money from? Cause we don't have it in our back pockets.
Okay, even if we had a million dollars a year, it's gonna take us thirty-five years to pay.
It would still take us thirty-five years, yes.
Okay, can you tell me where we can get a million dollars every year?
I would love to tell you where we can find a million dollars, absolutely.
Because I, I, I need to know this.
Yeah.
Because at, at, at two hundred thousand dollars a year, or three hundred thousand dollars a year to pay into it, you're not gonna pay it.
No, you're not.
Because you'll have four more or five more retirees. And then it's gonna, you're gonna, that's gonna continuously grow and.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And when it comes to overtime, when you were talking, Mr. Bonilla, I was thinking of my department. And just last week, because we've now started the next year's audit. And I sent out an email and I told them, now, don't forget, we still have our budget at the end of the year. I'm not allowing overtime. We have no overtime until May. I don't wanna see it. Every single one of them said, yes, ma'am. And that's all I had to do, and they understood. When their forty is done, they're done. They go home at the end of the day.
It's a little harder for the police and the fire.
Well, absolutely, and I only have ten people. So it, you know, it, my department doesn't make that much of a difference. But there has to be something that we can do as a whole to figure out where we can come up with the money to bring down. So it doesn't take us thirty-five years to pay this off.
Okay, uh, Mr. Thompson, will you address the, the difference between capping it and not capping it?
Mayor, members of the council, coming from that environment, I think I can possibly speak more closer to heart. And I hope that doesn't get involved here, because we need to speak with our minds more than anything. The answer to that question, Mayor, really, I can only answer it with another question. When is enough enough, right? Uh, I believe the policy is in place right now for a reason. And that policy's been in place for about two years, give or take. for about two years, give or take, maybe a little bit longer. However, the challenge would be on the directors to, to figure out a lot of things that, that impact the employees. We got fatigue, that's the main one. You know, sometimes employees or what have you would like to live outside of their means, and grants like Stone Garden, which are incredible and wonderful, kinda push those employees down that avenue, because it's been consistent since 2008. And I know Stone Garden keeps popping up every once in a while, because that's the main overtime, overtime fund for the police department. The policy's in place for a reason, we know that. If we eliminate the cap, yeah, I do, I do see that the department directors, both chiefs actually, to be able to manage that, and I know they're competent enough to do so. But I, again, I go back to that question, when is enough enough? And I, I think I'm skirting around the answer to that one, but I just, I, I don't have an accurate answer, like I can say in my heart, probably.
Is there a, is there a number between cap and no cap? A dollar number?
It's dependent on employee, mayor, honestly, what that would be. There's a fraction, there are 30% of the base salary upon everybody. What does that equate to? Well, depends, right? So on the top patrolman who's at 40, we'll round it up to 46,000, that 30% would be for a $12,000, give or take. So that is the magic number there. Can an employee make one?
That's what he will get in one year?
In one year, sir.
If it's, if it's not capped?
If it's not capped.
$12,000?
Trying to thought, it went sideways. I forgot where I was going with that one, but yes, it would be about $12,000, as it is right now, on a top-tier patrol officer. That does not include corporals or sergeants.
Mr. Mayor, maybe, maybe I can help with this discussion. Councilman Bonilla is 100% right. Dr. Verona was very, very adamant that we bring back a policy that capped overtime. He was adamant enough that he directed staff several times, I want, in next city council meeting, a policy capping overtime for staff. At the time, there was no discussion on the dais. There was no debate on the dais. It was just straight-up direction. I'm not sure if I was acting at the time, or we had a city manager at the time, I can't remember. But I do remember having conversations with both the chiefs, because that would be the ones that would, it would affect them the most. And I called them up and said, hey, guys, I'm getting directions to bring back a policy. I need a policy that you can live with and that you can manage. Both of them agreed that 30%, which is 24 hours of overtime in a pay period for the police department, and chief? 56?
It's almost 36 on the fire.
36 for fire was manageable to them. And I also left them a great out in the policy, saying that the only thing that they had to do, if they weren't able to manage a single employee to 30% of their scheduled hours, all they had to do was justify it in a memorandum or in an email, that's all I'm asking them, to the city manager. That's what the policy reads, that's what the policy you all passed. I can tell you that on just about every pay period, we have surpassed the 30%. The majority of the 30% for the police department has been a combination of Stone Garden and some police activities that they needed to accomplish. Plus, we have a wonderful personnel manual that says if you work a holiday, you get eight hours of overtime automatically, whether you work or don't work. Even if, you know, so those compound what I would describe as the problem. Not once has any of the chiefs, and they're both here, or any of our employees, have been reprimanded for violating the policy. It appears that all of their justification has been justified, at least in my, my view. So whether the policy is in place or the policy is not in place is pretty transparent to the management of the city. The chiefs and every one of the directors is accountable to the city manager, and they're accountable to the budget, and they're also accountable to managing the public funds the best they can. And that includes overtime, scheduling overtime, and paying overtime. So whether we eliminate the policy or don't eliminate the policy, I don't see it, and with my discussions with Gene, with Pat, with Michael Voskis and others, that that policy alone is not the silver bullet to take care of our unfunded liability. We have two problems in the city. One is the unfunded liability that we need to break down. And our second problem is we need to get under control our current liability. This year alone, our contributions to, to public safety retirement system has almost doubled. We just need to look at that, understand why it is doubling, and put steps in place that we can't continue down this path. As Councilman Bonilla has went and looked at, and I think it would be a good idea to bring Mr. Thompson to explain to mayor and council why this is occurring. I mean, we're at 62% for police?
A little over 61.
Yeah, there are communities, there are a few, I think it was eight councilmen? There were eight, eight communities within the 120, some community, police communities that participate, that are over 120%. So that means for every dollar you pay of public safety, you're paying $1.20 to the retirement. We just, as a community, I think maybe we just need to get our heads wrapped around this, put into some policy that we're able to continue with a great retirement system, right? But not have it affect our operations. So, Mr. Mayor, whichever way council decides, it doesn't really make a difference to me. I don't really think it makes a difference to the chiefs. We'll man, we'll manage it either way.
Is there any way that, or how, or you can imagine, to do another payment towards the PS PRS?
With this year's budget? We could probably figure out some.
You don't have to throw a number, just say yes or no?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Both chiefs, can you manage your departments when it comes to overtime? Without, without us doing it for you?
Looked at without percentage, as the councilman had said, we're short-staffed. As soon as those folks get their cert, we'll see overtime significantly. We'll be virtually fully staffed, so.
Chief Bermeus?
Sir, I have operational necessities, just like the chief has. Right now, we're using overtime, just like the chief, we're short-staffed.
Yes, I understand that.
You know, like finance, I mean, I can't tell our officers, you know, once 40 hits, they can leave.
I can understand that too.
Of our services, or some of our services are, we get help through grants, right?
Yes.
I think one of the things that's really messing us up right now, or not messing us up, but I guess, through the arrangement there, is when we get holidays, and Mr. Kissinger can attest to that, because the 10 hours that they work, or the eight hours that they work, they get accumulated as part of overtime pay, right? Which is, that's what it is, but in reality, that's, that's a policy for the city.
Yes.
Right? So if, if, at the end of the day, we gotta do what we gotta do, Mr. Mayor. If we go over, we justify, if we don't go over, we don't justify. Sometimes I have to justify two, four hours. I think this time is the one that I justify with one officer for like 25 hours, and that's because of supplemental shift that they're working, because we're short-staffed. But, I mean, we do with what we have, and either way, I mean, I would, it would be easier for the, for the policy to just hold us accountable for the overtime that we have and the grants that we receive versus you guys do policy, but at the end of the day, it's...
No, I understand. I'd rather have you look over the overtime and actually, believe it or not, even though Mr. Bonilla has a great haircut, I support him. I support him in this for the reason that I've already had a conversation with Mr. Kissinger and Mr. Thompson about it, because basically, you know, you look at things and not every day is gonna be the same. It'd be nice if we could project and say, you know, from all this month, we're not gonna have any overtime. It, it doesn't happen in public safety. You know, there's always gonna be some type of overtime or some type of an emergency, and then you're gonna have personnel that are not gonna show up, somebody's gotta cover for them. It's, it's different than, than, than per se, say, the water department. The water department is probably one of the only departments, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Voskis, that has overtime at public works. Why? Because they have water leaks. And they, they show up at, you know, I don't know why water leaks always show up after five, but they do show up after five, and holidays. And, and so, so, but not every department has it. You know, it's easy for you to tell your employees, you know what? We're not gonna have any overtime, because you have your department balanced out and what you, you, your work status, that you know that you can do it with regular time.
Right.
But it's not easy for, for public safety.
Not at all.
So unless anybody else and the members of the council have anything to say?
Mr. Mayor?
I, I agree.
Just one thing to say, and I just wanna make sure that it's very clear to the council and it's very clear to the public that's listening to us and both chiefs, not once, not once have they been denied any, any employee working any hours due to any circumstances. Not once.
Yes.
Not once have they said, you know what, chief? You can't use your officers for that need. Or, chief, you can't use them. Or any one of the directors sitting here, okay? The only thing that I have asked them was for, as the policy said, a written statement of why they surpassed the cap of 24 hours in a pay period per employee. And when the justification was, John, there was a holiday thrown in there, I totally understand that, because that's not operational. Those guys aren't doing something to get the automatic eight hours of overtime, whether they work or not. So I don't even count that as, I know it counts on paper, because it's called overtime, but it's not them physically working. It's a, it's a benefit that we give them. So I don't think that that was the intention behind the policy. And sometimes you gotta look at policies and understand what the intention was behind it. But there was never a time, I want you to know, that they were denied to provide the services that they provide with the personnel that they have. So whether we have the policy or don't have the policy, they're gonna do the same job. So to me, it's transparent, it doesn't even need to be on there.
Yeah, and we had that conversation. And, and, and it's good that, that, you know, that you're trying to get this. And, and, and what I recommend is, for both of you chiefs, is that, you know, if you see something that's happening, you know, that you do need to come to the city manager, because we talked about that, I recommend you do that, you know? Because, you know, that's why policies are set by council, is because sometimes it seems like it's not happening that way. But I, John's doing a great job on that, and you guys are doing the same thing. And all you have to do is manage it, you know? And what we need to do in finance is, is stay on top of it and, and, and see how we can, we can, you know, muster up a way how we can, you know, pay into it. We're never gonna pay it, it's gonna be, $35 million is a lot of money, you know? And I remember talking to Mr. Verona about this, and, and he says, I hate to leave this problem to somebody else. I'm sorry, we're gonna leave it to somebody else, because our terms will be up, and we're not even gonna be near it. And, and that's, that's what happens. You know, I inherited this, somebody else passed it to me.
So, Mr. Mayor, there, there's several ways of paying down the unfunded liability. There's several different ways of doing it. My recommendation to this mayor and council is that we give the opportunity for a consultant to come in, talk to us about what the unfunded liability is, what it's not, what it should do, what it shouldn't do.
Good idea.
And what is the best way to deal with it as a city? Some of the cities jumped at it right away, went and floated bonds to, to pay their unfunded liability. We've heard our financial advisor tell US council that he didn't think that was a good idea to do today. He said, let's give it some time, let's see where this goes. One year, two years is not gonna make the big difference, you know, in, in, in what your decision's gonna be, because the number is so huge. There's policy, there's plan changes going on with the public safety retirement, and I know the councilman heard a little bit about that. So it's not a life-or-death emergency decision that you all have to make tonight, but I do think it's something that needs to be done. And I would encourage us to have a study session and bring the right people in to give you enough information where you can make a good, informed decision on it.
If I may add something, Mayor?
Go ahead.
What, what makes this more complicated for the city of Nogales? And I'll give you, I'll give you just one number. The state of Arizona paid $500 million to the DPS officers, because they have deep pockets. So they didn't, they didn't have to rack their minds, say, how are we gonna fix it? They just said, here, here goes $500 million, and the problem is, is fixed. We don't not, we don't have these, these deep pockets. But there are certain ways that I've learned, that we can get together and, and, and sort of see how, how we can pay this down. I, I, I truly believe that we don't, we can pay this down, maybe, not in 30, but in, in 15 years.
Are you gonna win the lottery?
No, but there are ways, there are ways that if we could manage it, 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 it could come down in 15, 20 years.
I don't think I have 15 years of life. I hope so. No, but, but, you know, it's, it's, it's understandable. I can understand, Mr. Bonilla, and I know you've done some research on this, and it's good. That's what a city councilman should do, you know, especially if you wanna, you know, be able to present something in the council and, and, and be successful in it, you know? But, but we do have to be very, very conscious of what's going on.
Absolutely.
You know, yeah. And, and floating bonds, John, you know, that's scary.
Well, the city of Flagstaff sold all their property.
Yeah.
Every, every inch of their property, they sold it and leasing it back. And that's how they're gonna pay this down. I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
How much did they owe?
That's what they did.
You know? How much did they owe?
I, I forget, I think it was, I don't know. I, I think I heard something like 80 or something like that, but...
Oh, my God.
I'm not real sure, Mayor, and, you know.
Yeah, but the properties we have are, they're like a buck 250.
It is what it is. I mean, we're not, I mean, luckily, we, we're not swimming in cash, but...
Yes, I understand. But we also need to have, making sure that our public safety is, is subpar. And chief, you know, you need to, you need to get just fully staffed, and you need to get fully staffed soon, you know? The opportunity's here right now, and, and then you never know, one day, if we're successful with adding station. I was, I was talking to the councilman and to Mr. Thompson earlier in the office. You know, you, you might end up with 100 officers, not 60-some-odd. How many do you have right now?
We, we're allowed, it's 55.
55? You know, you could have, you know, in, in the future, and, and the fire department too. So what are we gonna do then? We expect to, you know, be able to
Afford it.
Come up with a, a way of how doing it and, and, and having that revenue stream coming into the city and being able to have a good contingency fund that we could say, you know what, we can draw from that to pay a little bit onto it, or, or, or plan for it every budget year or something, I don't know. But we have to do it. And what John just said about us having a study session just on this, I think we could spend a couple hours on that, and let's plan for that. Let's plan for that. Is there anybody else? Go ahead, councilman.
John, you said it doesn't matter if we approve this amendment today, tonight, or in the future. What do you recommend? Do we just bring it back in another day?
Councilman, you all can vote either way on this policy, whether you leave the policy in place or you eliminate the policy. What I'm telling you is that operationally, it's transparent. The policy right now only calls for limiting overtime to a particular employee for 24 hours. However, right, if the chief needs them to work more than 24 hours, he has all the... If the chief needs them to work more than 24 hours, he has all the authority in the world to do that. So it's kind of like a policy, so, to my, to, for me, looking at the policies, almost like a policy just to remind the chiefs every two weeks to try to maintain less than 24 hours, which in my opinion, they try to do anyway. Not that 24 hours is a magic number. I think that the chief scrutinizes all of their overtime, and they do their best to be as wise as they possibly can with the taxpayers' dollars.
So, so as a top administrator of the city of Nogales, what do you recommend?
I recommend that you all just do whatever you want to do on this. If you want to vote it down, vote it down. If you want to leave it, what I'm telling you, it makes no difference to me, Hector. Either way, your vote on it, um, I believe that, uh, it was, I believe that this policy was put in place for political reasons. And if the policy is taken out of place, it'll be taken out of place for political reasons. So I, I don't sit where you sit, uh, so I'll let you all vote however you want to vote on this.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Kissinger. I recommend that we have a, a study session on it to be better informed and certainly the public. So I guess, uh, you know, tabling this issue tonight would be a recommendation that I could make.
I'm okay with tabling it.
Yeah, no, I'm not asking you for your recommendation. I'm suggesting what I'm recommending, yeah, or.
Councilman Diaz?
That's what I was going to say. I agree with, uh, Councilman Montiel as we should have a study session.
It's councilwoman.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry. Getting used to it. But anyways, I, I, I agree with her as far as probably doing a study session before, before we make any, any decision. That we will be well informed and we'll have more information. So I, I, I.
Councilman?
I agree.
You feel the same way? Okay, the, and this is the thing, that, uh, if we do it or we don't do it, we're still going to end up spending what we're going to spend.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? Simple as that. And, and, and if we come with a study session, the study session is going to only tell us how we're going to pay it, how, not how we can control the, 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 the overtime. So think, let's think first. This is the, we're not talking about how we're going to pay it. We're talking about right now, can these two chiefs control their overtime? That's it.
Mayor, you know what I can tell you, and Mayor Council, if I have a checkbook that has a $7,000, $7 million budget, I can guarantee you that I'll always meet that budget or come under it, which I have for the last four years. And if I don't, then hold me accountable. But I think we have a checkbook and, and, and we're capable and competent of, of writing those checks and for the right reasons and justifying.
Yeah. That's, that's why I don't agree for tabling it because we're not, the problem is, uh, is, is not, not that, uh, that we're going to pay it. The, the, the meeting or the study session is going to be on, who's going to explain to us how we can pay it? You know, right now, we can have the study session in a month, and if we pass it right now, it doesn't mean anything. It doesn't mean anything. If the person comes back and says, hey, you know what? We can pay it like Mr. Bonilla said in 15 years. Okay, show me. Show me how we can pay it in 15 years. But if they come to me and say, you know what? Unless we invest $2 million a year for the next, uh, 15 years, we'll pay it down, then, you know, I'll believe that. But this has nothing to do with the overtime. It has nothing to do with the overtime. Because the study sessions, the person in the study session is not going to tell us, ah, you got to cap it at 50%. No, they can't do that. Because we have to, we have to think about the public safety of the residents of Nogales. And if they need to have a little bit of overtime when it's needed with their direction and John's direction and understanding what's happening, that's all I need. It's because they just tell me, they, both of the chiefs and John tell me right now, even though just, John doesn't want to say, go ahead, pass it, you know? He's basically telling me, it's kind of like when we're voting and you decide to abstain. You know what that means? It's a yes. Okay, it's a yes. So, so, so we either pass it or not pass it right now. But I don't think we should table it. Go ahead.
Mayor, and the reason I, I, I respect and I trust the judgment of these, um, department heads, specifically talking about Chief Bermodes and the fire chief, um, in no way are we trying to, or I'm trying to undermine you or, or make some decisions for you. You certainly know your department. I think it got muddled a little bit because we're talking about two issues. And that's the reason I'm thinking about a study session. If we could just separate the, the both issues so we don't muddle them, it kind of got muddled in this whole conversation. But, um, you're, you're, you're absolutely right, you know? On how to deal with other, not this issue, but the other issue, of course, they're two different things. And that's one of the reasons I brought up the study session, to discuss how we're going to deal with a big, big elephant in the room.
Yeah, the agenda item right now has nothing to do how you're going to pay it.
Exactly.
The agenda item right now, will we keep the cap?
Will we keep the cap or not? Thank you.
All right. So I think, I think we shouldn't table it. And I think at this point, I'll call for the question, and we'll start, yes?
You're going to take the vote with questions, sir? I need a question in a second.
We didn't have the motion in a second. Mr. Massey? All this conversation, we never had it?
It's, it's.
I think we did. Didn't we have?
I think we need a motion on direction, but that's, if you want to make a motion.
Oh, go ahead. Let's make a motion. Who motions?
I'm, I'll go ahead and motion.
Motion, okay. And, Bonilla? You're going to second it?
Mr. Bohorkin.
Mr. Bohorkin, all right.
Mr. Bohorkin.
So.
Motioned.
So the motion is going to be to amend, uh, amending the, the 30, the, the cap, okay?
Excuse me, Mayor. Agenda item just says action, so the action could be to amend by removing the cap.
By removing the cap.
Just to make that clear.
All right, and we're going to go with roll call vote.
So the motion is to remove the.
The cap, yes. And start with me, Madam Clerk. Aye.
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 And now you kind of got a little bit of direction, John, that we planned for a study session. And that's going to be for, for how we're going to pay this.
Yes.
And, and, and let's have lunch on that one, okay? Because I think we're going to have a real serious discussion down there.
Sounds good.
And we can bring the people in that you think that can help us out. Mr. Thompson, you're aware of this too, that, okay? Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just to remind you, you can possibly take item number 91, a consent agenda, if it's still going to the council. Over here, over here on the seat.
Yes. Yes. I still have mine. Yeah?
I apologize. That one was so long, I missed that one.
You're becoming the mayor here. Okay. See, discussion, creating an awareness team between the city and the county to address fentanyl use. I placed this on the agenda. Chief, I had a meeting with your A Chief. And just for your information, I, I, I met individually in the past days with Sheriff Hathaway. I met with County Attorney Silva, and I met with Assistant Chief and, and about the, you know, the growing problem of fentanyl. I know it's been around for several years, uh, but I think it's, just by what I read in the newspaper, but of what I've talked to people in CBP and the port, it's, uh, it's what's happening right now the most. And I'm sure you guys know, and, and the police department knows, and, and the fire department that have responded to overdoses in our city. Uh, I'll talk, by talking to Mr. Hathaway, the sheriff, and of talking to, uh, County Attorney, yeah, we've had several overdoses and, 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 uh, it's, um, it's hitting our teens, it's hitting the young people in Nogales. And we, as a council, we cannot allow that to happen. We have to be, uh, not only, uh, aware of what's happening, but we need to have, be part of solving the problem. So today I also met with, uh, representatives of Circles of Peace, and even though they came to my office to, to talk about, uh, the Bicycle Fest, the Fiesta that they have, you know, that we missed out last year, we're having this year, but they're very involved in this, uh, working with the schools and working with, uh, uh, school superintendent, Alfred Velazquez, and, and working with, uh, County Attorney. But what we need is, is, is actually to join forces to combat this. And I told them, and they said, Mayor, thank you very much for doing this, because we do need to have city, the county, and, 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 and both departments in the county, all of us working together, even though they have been working also with the governor's office, I believe, with the state, uh, on some grants, how they, 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 they talk to, uh, parents, they talk to schools, they bring some of the kids and some of the people that have gone through an overdose, they, they have the opportunity also to give them, what's it called? Narcan? To be able to bring them out of an overdose. They have all this information, but we're not community involved. We only have a couple of people working or a couple of groups working. We need to work on this, chief, it's very important, okay? And, and, uh, when I talked to the, the County Attorney and the Sheriff, he said that soon we should all get together here at City Hall or at the county and, and start working to, to create this, this, uh, this, this force, uh, uh, I don't know what we're going to call it, but whatever we call it, it's going to be to combat this, and I need the support of all the members of the city council. Let's work on this. Let's, let's put this message out that we're not going to stand here and wait for, um, any more of our children or, or friends to go through this, uh, you know, overdoses with this drug. This is a very, very dangerous drug. One pill can be different than the other one by 100 or even 1,000 times stronger. It's not, it's not regulated. It's, 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 it's very, very bad. And I didn't know that they smoked it. That's what I was told by the, by the, the County Attorney, that they smoke it, they put it in, in marijuana joints, they, they do everything with it. I, I thought it was a pill that you drank like that, no. So, so, you know, I, myself, I'm going to start, you know, learning about this, but, uh, when we start working on this, members of the council, we need to be part of it. All of us need to be part of it. We can't, we, let's not, let's not, let's not this, let it go any further. You know, uh, I know that the police department, um, you've had several overdoses, chief, you know, recently, and, and, and I know that the fire department has been in some calls too, and, and, and the county has several. Let's not, and, and I think we've had deaths, if I'm not mistaken, on this. So let's not, let's not allow this to happen. So I ask you all, and a member, and everybody that's, uh, watching this right now on YouTube, and parents, you know, take care of your children. Watch what they do. Be very careful and, 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 uh, be part, be part of the community to combat this. Let's not let this drug, uh, uh, go rampant in, in our city. And, 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 you know, it's, sometimes it's not in our control because it comes from Mexico, through Mexico, and it comes through our ports, and it ends up in, in, in people's houses here in Nogales. And then it ends up in the streets and ends up with our kids. And so, you know, this is not a marijuana joint, okay? This is some serious stuff. This kills. So, so I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think they told me it was, uh, 94,000 people die a year from overdoses for fentanyl. 94,000? That is a lot of people dying of all ages. So I just wanted to let you know that that's my, those are my plans, and, and those are the conversations I've had with the representatives from Circles of Peace and, and with the County Attorney and the Sheriff and, 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 and the A Chief and, and Mr. Kissinger. So, uh, be prepared, we're going to, I'll be coming up with this, and once I come up with this, I'll bring it back to the city council.
And Mayor, Mayor, thank you, thank you for taking the lead on this.
Uh, I, I think I shared with you a couple of weeks that, uh, I had a nephew a couple
of weeks ago in Nogales Sonora. He was, uh, a year in rehab. The day that he got, came out is the day that he overdosed. He did some coke, and it was laced with, with fentanyl, and he, he OD'd.
We talked about that, and it was so sad.
So it, 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 we need to take, we need to fix this, we need to, um, educate people because it's, it's not, it's not a, it's not a recreational drug.
When he overdosed, he died.
Yeah, he died. He died, he died in my brother's arms. So, um, uh, I, I, I totally agree that we need to, uh, create this, uh, awareness team as, as soon as possible.
We're going to work very hard on it. That's all I have to say on this. Thank you. Chief, go ahead.
I appreciate, um.
Would you come to the podium?
I appreciate your support and, and your, uh, obviously, we need to do some real outreach on this. We don't have a problem that's out of, uh, control yet.
Yes.
But I can surely tell you that our, uh, fentanyl calls have increased and our mental illness calls have increased, and most of the time they're correlated with each other.
Yes.
So.
And you know the worst thing about it, chief, and this is what I told, uh, the County Attorney, we don't want to call it a crisis, man.
Right.
No.
You know, once you start calling it a crisis, then it's really, really out of control, and it's very hard to bring it back. Let's get to it and, 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 and work hard so that we don't have to use that word at all in the city of Nogales.
Yes, sir. Thank you for.
Thank you very much, chief. Okay, now, John, we can do it. Yes. Uh, number nine, liquor licenses from A to D, unless anybody opposes it, I wanted to make, make a motion to go have it in consent agenda.
So move, Mayor.
All right. All right. Discussion. Hearing none, honor favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Number 10, orders, consideration, possible action of order 2021 dash 08, 08 dash 038, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, appointing members to the Board of Adjustments.
So move, Mayor.
Let's say, okay, I've, I've, uh, I've already called two of them, I didn't get the third person. Uh, one of them is, uh, a former police officer, um, um, Grádias.
Octavio Grádias.
Octavio Grádias. And the other one is Bettina Damon. They've, uh, I asked them if they, if they could be part of it, they both agreed to it, and so those are the two people that I'm asking you to appoint. The, the alternate, I haven't, there's, I have some people in mind, but I wasn't able to get ahold of them before this meeting, so we'll bring that person later on. Okay? Honor favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. B, consideration, possible action of order 2021 dash 08, 039, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, authorizing the purchase of one new 2020 international hydro excavator truck, that's what it is, okay, for the water department for the total amount of 455,379.54.
So move, Mayor.
It costs more than a fire truck. No, it's not the one. They're expensive, huh? Is this one of the vector trucks?
Yeah, it's for the water.
Uh-huh. Yeah. They're expensive trucks. No, you don't have to come up, no.
Mr. Mayor.
I just want, I just wanted to joke with you.
And it was approved in the budget.
Yeah, I know it was. But I mean, you know, you look at 455,000, that's, that's what your fire trucks cost, huh, Chief? Just a little over. All right. Do I have a motion on this?
Yes.
Second, they did?
Uh-huh, yes.
I wasn't paying attention. See, Mr. Messi?
It's leaving the day.
I know, I don't know. Okay, is there any discussion on this? No?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. C, consideration, possible action of order 2021-08-040. An order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to purchase two kiosks as part of the Water Conservation Education and Technology Grant from Arizona Department of Water Resources.
So moved, Mayor. Second.
Discussion. John, could you explain this?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
John will explain a little bit on what it is.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Our Public Works Director reached out to Arizona Department of Water Resources, actually, they reached out to him and offered him a grant opportunity for $56,000 to put two kiosks, or not necessarily to put two kiosks, but to, to spend the money to inform our, our ratepayers how much water they might be using on a monthly basis and, and what their bill is, so they can be better informed. We entered into that grant, and we were awarded the grant. And the, as we were looking at those kiosks as, as a means to inform our public of their water consumption, we immediately found that it would be able to modify these kiosks and have our ratepayers be able to make online or kiosk payments. So they'll not only be able to see, look up how much water they're consuming or their utility bill, and whenever they come to, to this kiosk, they'll also be able to make payments at these kiosks for their utility bill. The award was for $56,000. The total amount of the project is $70,000. The difference is we're splitting out of the operational fund of the water sewer and sanitation enterprise funds to accomplish this, this purchase. Staff is recommending that Mayor and Council pass this order and give me the opportunity to purchase these kiosks. We're planning on putting one kiosk in front of City Hall, and one kiosk possibly in front of Public Works. And then as we develop the bank, we'll move the kiosk over to the bank. And my understanding, with speaking with our MIS and our, our MIS Director and our Public Works Director, that that move is pretty easy to do. So that, that would be staff's recommendation, staff goal to accomplish.
Thank you, John. Is there any other discussion? No? Go ahead.
John, is there gonna be an employee tending those kiosks, or, or, you know, people that don't know how to operate them, are they gonna be, you know, somebody there to instruct them how to use them?
I don't, we, we didn't anticipate having an employee just staying at the kiosk, but we might be able to do some type of an information system, says if you have any question or anything, come on into Public Works or come into the City Hall, and we'll send somebody out there to show them how to use it. I, I haven't seen it, Councilman. I don't know how self-explanatory it is, but whatever it takes, staff will, will do their best to make sure that the public's able to assess these, access these kiosks and, and get the information to the payments they need to do.
I'm sure they, they're gonna have the instructions in Spanish and English, right, and the side care of the kiosks?
I, I'm, I'm assuming that's the case. Like I said, I haven't seen them. I think that would be up to us, I don't think the kiosks themselves, Jose's not here, but they don't have the actual instructions on them, do they?
So, I apologize for just.
Yeah, you, you might know.
Yeah, I spoke to Jose a little bit not too long ago, and it's as simple as a bilingual unit, a PC-based environment on a cell service. It'll be mobile as to when we open up our, our annex building, we'll be able to relocate one. So it's as easy as bringing in your receipt, your water bill, it's gonna have a barcode, QR code, you scan it, and it opens up the world for you. You wanna do daily checks, weekly checks, monthly checks, make a payment, make an arrangement, just about anything possible at that point. So it, it really is that basic.
So the best, a better way to describe it, Robert, is if you know how to use an ATM, you could probably use this kiosk. So if you look at an ATM, there's not a whole bunch of instruction, both English and Spanish, on a, on a placard, but if you, the screen will tell you what's next.
Will prompt you.
I'm not sure if it's in English and Spanish, but that's a good question, I can find out for you and let you know.
All right, thank you.
Is it?
John? Can the public be advised or be informed at the word that that's going to be an option?
Absolutely. When I get them, as soon as we get them and we have them installed and we test them and make sure it works and everything is good, absolutely, it will be something we'll put out on all our means of communication with the public to include their utility bill to, to, you know, to all of our, our customers.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, then we're gonna go to letter D.
I think we need to vote.
Oh. Then, call for a question. Are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nuns? No one is?
Or nuns.
The ayes have it.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Council.
Okay, then we'll go to letter D. Consideration and possible action of order 2021-08-041. In order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, approving an intergovernmental agreement with IGA, with Nogales Unified School District One and USD related to the use of facilities, parks.
Mr. Mayor, would you like a, a presentation on this? I think it would be a, a good time to have a presentation by our new Parks Director and have her come up to the podium and, and give us a complete explanation of this, Mr. Mayor.
We don't need that time.
It's baptism under fire, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this is a routine, it expires every year, we bring it to you every year for approval. Staff's recommending that.
Oh, you were, you were about to jump up from that chair.
I think she might be prepared for another item, not so much this one, but this is, this is a good contract.
This is the beginning.
Trevor pushed on having the school put in some new scoreboards.
Yeah, let's see if we can do that.
We'll, we'll work with the new superintendent, make sure that happens.
Okay, so is there any more discussion? Hearing none? Did you, was there a motion and everything? It was, yeah?
Yes.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. E, consideration, possible action of order 2021-08-042. An order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the purchase of six 2021 Chevy work pickup trucks from Courtesy Chevrolet, which is a state contract vendor for the Nogales Parks and Recreation Department in Phoenix, Arizona, for the total of $166,110.30.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're spending all that money?
That was way too easy.
She's spending, Mr. Maldonado, I think she's spending too much money.
It's six vehicles, so it's not that bad.
Okay. If it was up to Mr. Maldonado in recreation, he'll tell you where to spend a hundred thousand dollars. No, but we do need those trucks. Just joking. Okay.
They're gonna make more fields, they gotta get there faster.
Yeah, they did. They got, they had to have the equipment to get there, huh?
Mr. Mayor, these are the, the first two orders that Ms. Travers put together, and I wanna congratulate, she learned very quick and got these done in, in time, on time, and got them to let you with all the attachments to them, so we're very proud of her. And she also got your approval unanimously.
Perfect. You think we should give her a plaque or something?
We'll, we'll wait another 20 years.
Okay. All right. Okay, F. Let me see. F, consideration, possible action of order 2021-08-043. An order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the Nogales School District Number One for the reimbursement of salaries and employee-related expenses for two police school resource officers at the Nogales High School and Wade Carpenter Middle School for 2021, 2022 school year.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay. G, consideration, possible action of order 2021-08-044. An order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, approving the purchase of two 2022 F-350 ambulances from Republic EVS, which is a HGAC Houston-Galveston Area Council vendor, at the total of $359,279.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think Renee was ready to talk about this one, too.
Renee was gonna talk about that one, too?
Yambler? No?
No. The reason I, I went fast on that one, because I know if the chief gets on the podium, we'll be here till 12.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. H, consideration, possible action of order 2021-08-045. An order of the council of the city of Nogales approving an agreement with the Communication Workers of America Local 7,000.
So moved. Second.
Second. Is there anybody here that, Mr. Thompson, you have something to say on this?
So we do have Ms. Hatfield up on the screen. Negotiations went really smooth with CWA. There's two changes, I believe, on the contract, which are on, on the orders. Aside from that, things went really well.
Do you feel comfortable?
Very comfortable, sir.
Yeah?
Very comfortable.
Yeah, well, if you feel comfortable, I feel comfortable, too.
Righty.
So is there, is there, do we have a motion on this?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Messi, we did?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we did? Okay. See, I lose track of, sometimes, Mr. Messi, you gotta take care of me. All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Yes.
I, I just wanna make sure that the Mayor and Council understand that this is Mr. Thompson's first negotiation of the union contract. He, he's been on the other side at times, but this is the first time he's been on management side to negotiate contracts. He did all three of them. I'm very proud of the job he did, and he, he did a, a, a very good job on, and I, and I appreciate you passing this contract as presented.
Like they say in the Navy, a yeoman's job.
A yeoman's job, sir.
Yes. But we're gonna be, we're gonna really have to make a lot of plaques. He's gonna need one, too.
He's got his own.
Oh, he, he's already been past it.
Another 20.
Another 20, okay. Okay, so now we're going to I. Consideration, possible action of order 2021-08-046. An order of the council of the city of Nogales approving an agreement with the Nogales Police Officers Association.
So moved.
Who's getting up on this? Chief? Is there a motion? Second.
Second.
Chief?
There went the bus.
Yes.
Mayor, members of the council, again, through negotiations with MPOA, we had a sit-down with part of the executive board and then follow-up phone calls. We came to a lot of, we agreed on a lot of things, a lot of the changes were, in addition to field training officer pay, basically an officer who's training, an officer in training, sorry about those terms, will receive 18.75% compensation per hour, and it equates to a, a subamount of.
Twenty-seven thousand?
Give or take. Just to be cautious, we rounded it up to 30,000. That's gonna be something coming out of the chief's overtime budget. The chief is, you know, right on track with this, saying that, and he's always said, and I'll quote him, if it's worth doing, it's worth paying. We really do want high-quality officers out in the field, so it's only fair and equitable to compensate the trainers. So we did some math, and that's what it came out to. The additional change was, I don't have my contract. Uniform allowance. Uniform allowance was bumped from $127.50 per month per officer to 150 even. That was an impact of, I forgot what that number is again, but we think that's gonna be a, a wash in itself. His budget does have, or does afford for, for that amount to have a wash. The reason we call it a wash is because we are not at full staff, or I should say, the PD's not at full staff. Eventually we will, but by the time we get there, because of the timeframes between the academy and everything, we should be right in tune with his uniform budget item. The other item that we had, that we agreed to, I think those were it. So the two, the three impasses that we have, of course, are the agenda, which is a 20-year service ring award. The court pay, which used to be, or is at right now, depending on what happens tonight, a three-hour minimal. The chief's inclined to move to a 1.5 or hour-per-hour overtime rate, pretty consistent with overtime pay. And the additional, the last one is.
The vest.
The vest, the outer vest. The chief believes it's a management right to be able to call for that uniform change. MPOA believes the opposite. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to the chief, or Victor.
You wanna justify your stance first?
And what we will ask Mayor and Council, of course, as the agenda says, there's a couple of options. We can move any which way, modify the agreement, or come back as we give it another round at it.
Okay.
Good evening. Victor Heatherington, 124 Allen, El Paso, Rio Rico, Arizona. I'm the president of the Police Officers Association here in Nogales, Arizona. The reason we're at impasse is I understand that the three-hour court thing affects the budget, and it's after the fact that the budget's already been approved. The chief was gracious enough to allow us to put in the FTL pay. The union's willing to give up the three-hour overtime and go for hour-for-hour on the courts. So that's not an issue for us. Unfortunately, I hadn't had a chance to meet with the chief because I was out of town at a conference. The vice president was negotiating this part, and we've, we've discussed it since then, and we're willing to give that up. And, and as far as the class ring, we're willing to give up the class ring as well. It's been on our contract for probably five years, and we've never been able to get one, so it just wasn't enough money for the cost. The rings were, I think, like $1,200. You know, we were able to get the city to allow us to spend $500, and it was nowhere near what would, what needed to be done, so we're willing to give up the rings and, and let that be gone. The outer vest is an issue that we've been dealing with for now for about 10 years. The police department came out with the directive 2013. Since then, we've been trying to get the outer vest. And what it is, it's an outer vest, it's a load-bearing vest. What that vest means is that it allows us to take gear from the belt and put it up on the vest. That reduces the amount of weight that's on the vest, on the belt, which helps our backs and hips. The University of Wisconsin did a study, and I have a copy of it here, in 2017, and their study showed that, yes, it did help police officers with lower back pain and hip problems. Police Department of Wisconsin went to that. We wouldn't be the first agency to do this. I mean, all the agencies, well, I can't say all the agencies, there are several agencies within the county that wear the outer vest with the load-bearing vest. U.S. Customs does it, U.S. Border Patrol does it, Santa Cruz Sheriff's Department allows it. Our department is allowed for certain specialty units to allow it. What we're trying to do is get it for the patrol officers. The other thing that allows the officer to do is, is put the vest, like, for example, I have my vest underneath my uniform. This would put it in the vest, so the officer can open the vest, let air in. I'm not a big fan of removing the vest at any time, because you never know what's gonna happen, but I know of officers who sometimes come to the office to write reports, they'll take off their vest and write without the vest on to try and cool off. And that's what we're at impasse, is the vest. We feel that. We feel that we should be allowed to get this vest, because the magical phrase to me is, what's it gonna cost the city? Nothing, absolutely, zero. It's gonna cost the officer. That's why we asked the chief to raise the uniform allowance, and he agreed to do so. The vest itself is a hundred and fifty dollars. One officer purchased a vest, went out and got the armored plates that goes in the vest for rifles, for AK-47s, that cost them an additional six hundred dollars. A hundred and fifty dollars a month, this is gonna take a while before we can get that money. Our vests are expensive already, as is. We're asking mayor and council to vote and allow us to do this. Not every officer's gonna wear this outer vest. Not every officer's willing to spend the money. We'd just be like, given the choice and the ability to be able to wear this outer vest. The younger generation's coming in, I'm on my way out, younger generation's coming in, they're all about the outer vest. They like the way it looks, they like, every big agency in the county, in the state does it, they wanna look like that. I've been here for eighteen years. I've done well by my family. I love working for the city, I love working for this department. Younger generation thinks differently. They want more money. They, to them, it's all about the money. And we keep trying to explain to them, if you wanted to make money, police work was the wrong field. You do it for the love of the job and the love of the community, not for the money. So they say, well, you know, they want the look, the part, they want it to look cool, they want the vest. They don't want back problems. We asked, you know, the chief to work with us on this. The chief stated it was management right, that they have the right to choose the uniforms, and I totally agree with that. If we have a special event and the chief says, hey, I want everybody in Class As for funerals, yeah, absolutely. We'd just like to give them the option. So at this point in time, we're not able to negotiate with the chief, so we're asking for you guys to assist us and allow us to give us this option on our contract. And that's why we're at impasse for the, for the outer vest. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council? We had negotiation talks probably about three weeks ago, and this wasn't even discussed. To me, that was a moot point. I understand everything that Officer Heatherington said about the back problems. Believe me, after thirty-five years, that's one of the things I suffer from, back problems, hip problems, everything else. However, there's a lot of agencies going to that, I agree. One of the things that I can tell you, that is a management right as far as to operational, and I don't think that, I don't wanna burden you guys for making, to make decisions on my operations to begin with. I see myself as a subject matter expert in law enforcement and at the Nogales Police Department and for my community. At a time when the presentation was given earlier about economic development, one of the things that we suffer from is obviously lack of tourism, lack of visitors in our community, and the such. As it is, everybody has a perception that Nogales is militarized, okay? And nobody comes down because everybody's afraid, everybody thinks that there's shootings going on and everything else. Now, our responsibility, and my responsibility as our chief for the Nogales Police Department is that our officers are not only enforcers and protectors, but most importantly, ambassadors of our community. And I don't wanna send that image that it's militaristic, that our officers are unapproachable. However, this is not really off the subject yet. Monday, or last, early this week, I believe Monday, we're putting together a uniform committee to get input from officers as far as to, you know, just like Officer Heatherington said, as far as to their input, as far as to why we should, what we should wear and stuff like that. At the end of the day, I need to regulate it. I need to regulate it, and it's my, I need to, I can, as a manager, as a management rights, to say what uniform we're gonna wear, what kind of uniform we're gonna wear. And that's my only thing. Again, you know, we need to improve the image of our community. And I'm not against, totally against, the weight-bearing vest, but I wanna manage it to certain, certain, certain shifts or certain special events or anything like that. But this has no place in the MPOA contract, because it takes the regulation away from me, and now it's in the MPOA contract, and that's really what it is. So I'm not totally opposed with it. I'm still sitting down with them in the, in the uniform committee, and we'll see where it goes from there. But that is a management right, Mr. Mayor, and I would appreciate it if you guys would leave it as such. And, and believe me, I will not steer my department wrong. I'm, that's, I mean, there's nobody else that's gonna be more worried about my officers than I will, and I'm doing the best I can with what I have. And believe me, I, this is not off the table, but I just want this to be my decision and not theirs.
One thing, chief, a vest like this, is it kinda tactical, or is it something you would use for? Say, say you have a certain situation that you have. Would it be wise to use something like that for that? Because honestly, I'm gonna tell you, I don't wanna see a police officer with a vest like that walking around every day. I like the uniform. I think the uniform is presentable, and I, and I think you approach somebody on a traffic stop, you should be wearing that.
Right.
As a matter of fact, I don't see why you're not wearing the smoky hat anymore like we used to do it before, because we used to, we couldn't get out of the car without it.
Right.
I'm sure you remember.
I remember.
And John and I were talking about that. We would get reprimanded if we got out of the car without the hat. And, and I strongly believe in uniforms. Uniforms, what does it mean? We all look the same, okay? Not, 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 and I'm gonna be honest with you, you know, I know some police officers are not gonna like it, but I don't like those cargo pants. I don't think they look good. You know, that uniform, that right there is a police officer's uniform for me in Nogales. You know, the graduates, the ones that were pictured, that's the uniform, you know? But I do believe in having protective gear for certain things. You know, like if you have a situation where you need to carry everything here or protective gear, I strongly believe in that, but I don't think you should be getting off the car and sighting somebody in that fashion. That's, that's the way I believe, okay?
Mr. Mayor, I'm
I'm a strong believer of a uniform, a clean uniform and a nice-looking pressed uniform and not worn-out uniform. I think it should always be a good uniform, especially when you're getting a clothing allowance.
I'm a very traditional chief. If you can see, I mean, I don't wear any pants with pockets, I still wear my full leather gear. Most things I suffer is from back and hip pain, and I've had that for the last thirty-five years, but sometimes it comes with the territory. You know, I just wanna make sure that I have the ability to say what we're gonna wear, and it shouldn't be any union contract to tell me what we're gonna wear.
And another thing, if they were to purchase it, I mean, could you have control of when they wear it?
Yes, and that's what, that's what we're working on right now.
That's what I'm saying, you know?
But it doesn't have to be in the MPOA contract.
Yeah, I understand.
Like I said, this is not off the, I mean, I'm not saying no one hundred percent, but it's gonna be regulated to certain events and certain shifts and stuff like that. I just don't want it, I don't feel comfortable with being in the MPOA contract, and now it's something that they're telling me that this is what's gonna happen and not the other way around.
Because I, not too long ago, I saw an officer directing traffic on Mariposa Road, wearing a hat that I know has nothing to do with the PD. And it didn't look professional
Yes, sir.
when I went by there. And, and I think we should look professional.
The only hat they're able to wear is ball caps.
Yeah. This wasn't that.
Chief, doesn't it supposed to say police?
Yes, sir.
Nothing else, right?
Nothing else.
This wasn't that.
You can't wear like a Budweiser beer cap.
No, no.
It kinda looked like the hats Gilligan used to use.
It's the pony hat, that's what they're wearing.
Yeah, that's not what you do on traffic control.
Right.
Traffic control, you should be professional in the middle of the street, because you're directing traffic and, and, you know.
Sure.
There's, there's, there's certain times you wear certain things.
I mean, those are used, again, through, by other agencies because of the sun, because of everything else. However, we're worried about image, and, yeah, we're worried, most importantly, about officer health and well-being, but we, there has to be a happy medium here, Mayor. There has to be a happy medium that we do both, and, and, you know, we have an image to uphold at the end of the day, but also, I'm also worried about, you know, their health and wellness.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, we talked about, when we talked about the overtime, so as far as to the uniform allowance that came out of my overtime, the pay for the field training officers came out of my overtime, and we worked on it, talking about budget in, you know, the last conversation we had a little while ago. But this, this is just something that, that I need to work on this with them, and it shouldn't, has no place on the contract, and that's my stance on it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Anybody have anything to touch the chief about?
No.
No? All right.
I have a question, chief. Those vests that we're talking about, for what events would you be using these, these type of vests, like in emergencies or, or like a Fourth of July, or when, when would you just sort of give us, I'm not saying, tell me exactly when you're gonna use them, but
Special events, when they're gonna be standing for quite a while. Right now, they're authorized for canine officers and motor officers, but that's, that's really about it. I've seen officers, and I'll give you a good example, when we were, I was up in Tucson, and I saw a sergeant that was wearing that outer vest, and depending on how you wear it, it looks very professional, but that's something that I need to regulate, because if it, if it, if it's out of my hands as far as to regulation, then you're gonna see your, your people that are your officers that are wearing it right, and your officers that look very sloppy and militaristic and everything else. So that's the only thing I'm, I'm saying is that this is not off the table for me, but it has to be regulated by myself and not, not anybody else.
And what's the difference between the, that vest we're talking about and the additional five hundred dollar one? Is it, is it that much more better, or is that?
It's not really a vest, Councilman, it's, it's a, it's a outer carrier, which you put your actual vest in it, and it just gives you the opportunity to, to put some other things like your radio and, and, you know, your taser. And if I do approve it, it will be regulated to a couple of things, not something like that, but again, we're, we're dealing with something that, there's a lack of trust in law enforcement as we speak right now, and I wanna bridge that gap to make us more approachable, more trustworthy. And, and my thing is that being a traditional officer, it, it just, it's just opening that gap more instead of closing it. But again, I'm not saying that that's off the table for myself, I'm just saying that, you know, we're still talking about that.
Okay.
And it has no, and it has no bearing in the MPOA contract.
Mayor and council, if I may?
Go ahead, Victor.
Just recently, an officer was commended for his ability to help someone in the public. They had a vehicle, they got, broke down. The officer brought him down to the police station, they got work on their car, got their car going, and the officer was recognized for the work he did. He was wearing that vest. Nobody was intimidated by him because he was wearing that vest. People are not gonna be intimidated by police because they wear a vest. It's how we present ourselves and how we carry ourselves that's gonna make that communication with the public. It's how I carry myself. I could be in full uniform and be disgruntled and have a horrible experience with the public. Just because I look good doesn't mean that that person had a pleasant experience with me. It's how I behave with them, how I interact with the public. And I'd have to say that, for the most part, our interaction with the public is, is very well, is a good one. I think we have a good rapport. I hate to say this, but this might be one of the few towns where people actually love the police more than they do the firemen. And that's, and that's because we do so much with, with our community. I mean, we're heavily involved.
Good one, Victor, that's a good one.
You know, we're not, we're not asking, you know, we're willing to meet with the chief, and if the chief says, hey, I don't want this on the vest, I don't want that on the vest, I only want this, we're totally agreed with standardized look. I mean, we don't want ten people out there and everybody's got a different version of it. We want the same vest, and everybody's gotta be standardized look. I understand that. It's not, you know, the vest also has a handle on the back. An officer gets shot, an officer gets hurt, I can grab that officer by that handle and pull him. How am I gonna pull the chief? From where, from how? From his gun belt? You know, the vest is on the outside of its carrier, but this carrier does have some tactical reasons to it. It does have a handle on the back. If an officer gets injured and I need to drag him because I can't pick him up, no one's gonna be able to pick me up. I don't know if they'll be able to drag me, but they'll be able, between two of them, might be able to drag me out. It does have a handle, and there is a tactical. And as far as, you know, how our interaction with the public, it's how the officer interacts with the public, how we behave. If we behave like professionals and we're courteous with people, it won't matter what uniform we're looking at. When I walk up to that car and I say, good afternoon, how are you? I'm Officer Heatherington with the Nogales Police Department, that already set the tone. They didn't look at my uniform because I don't put my face out there for officer safety reasons. I stand at the back door, they can't even see me. It's my interaction with them, how I interact, that's gonna dictate how that is gonna go with the public, and what perception they're gonna have.
Victor, but is there a problem that the chief has something to say when it comes to your uniform?
No, absolutely not. We're willing to meet with the chief and say, hey, chief, let us wear the vest, and like I said, not everybody's gonna wanna wear it. And we're willing to come with the chief and say, chief, what is it you want on this vest? What is it you don't want on the vest? We're still willing to do this. My concern is, we've been working on this vest since two thousand and thirteen, and we've yet to get it done. How long does it take? When we say we're working on this? Since two thousand and thirteen, and we haven't been able to achieve anything?
This is the first time you bring it to City Council?
No, it's not. It's the first time I bring it to City Council, because it goes to impasse, because we always agreed, okay, let's continue working on it. Let's see what we can come up with. I think we've waited long enough, and that's why we're at impasse, and that's why we're asking you to put it on our contract, so that we can finally sit down and say, okay, we got it on our contract, what's it gonna look like?
But once you have it in the contract, then you don't need the chief to put it on.
We need the chief, we, we're still willing to come to the chief and say, chief, what is it you want on, on the uniform? We wanna be standardized. We don't wanna look like slobs either. You know, we're still willing to come to the city and say, okay, we got the vest finally approved, let's go to the next step. What do we put on it? How should it look? That's what we want. We've been trying to do this since two thousand and thirteen, that directive came out under, under this administration. It's not, he wasn't part of that negotiating table. He was the assistant chief at the time. I think we've waited long enough to get the vest.
Hello, Mayor? Yes, go ahead. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. What I, what I'm understanding here is, I don't think Chief Bermeus is disagreeing with any of what you're saying. I think he's willing to sit down and discuss it and collaborate about it, and I think that that's a, you know, it's a positive sign that I see.
It is, but it's been like that since two thousand and thirteen.
Well, there's obviously, you know, something that
What would be the reason that we're still negotiating?
I don't know.
Yeah, neither would I, and we've negotiated in good faith, and I think we're beyond, we're
I think it's important to work in good faith, and I think he's willing to work in good faith now, and he's, you know, you've discussed it with us, and he has too, so I think something can be worked out, definitely.
Well, okay, I mean
That's a start, yeah.
Yeah, it's a start, but we've been starting for eight years.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Has it been eight years that we haven't been able to
I have no
agreement or
Councilman Bonilla? I'm sorry. I, I acknowledge, Councilman.
I'm sorry.
It's all right, finish. That's all right. Don't let it
Why has it been eight, eight years that
Well, we keep, we keep trying, and the city keeps saying, we'll look into it. Let's just wait, let's just wait. I mean, I can show you the directive, it does have an outer vest, but it, it doesn't have a load-bearing vest. We wanted the load-bearing vest since 2013. We negotiated and we, and we met them halfway and they said, okay, you know what? They formed the Uniform Committee. Yes, they did. And the employees were there. And they came up with the outer vest. It wasn't load-bearing. We went back to the table and asked for it again. We put it on our contract and they said, no, we're not willing to do that. And we take it off the contract. I think we, there's been enough give and take there. And that's why we're wanting to put it on the contract so we can finally get somewhere and say, please let us know, something. I think we've been more than patient. Yes, sir.
Victor, what's the consensus amongst the majority of the officers?
They want the vest. They want the vest. The officers want the vest because they, they look good. They feel like, they feel like other agencies, like larger agencies. Yes, we don't make the money, but we look like them, we feel like them. And it would improve morale. It really would improve morale because the officers would feel good about wearing the vest. Because they want it. If they didn't want it, I wouldn't even be here.
And they're gonna be paying it out of their own pocket.
Out of their own pocket. It doesn't cost the city a dime.
Well, I wore a vest for nine months when I was in Iraq. And I had a chest protector on it. And I, basically, all I carried was four ammo packs on it. And it did make a big difference on my back. It felt really good. So I jumped in the truck, the first thing I did was put on the vest. And it really did help, you know, it helped, it helped my body.
Right.
You know, 'cause I, you know, it was a good thing.
And like I said, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of taking off the vest. I really don't. I personally, if we, if we got the vest, I would ask the chief to write something to say, we're not allowed to take the vest off. Because I don't believe in it, you know? Something happens and you're not prepared, it's gonna be on that officer.
Okay. So also, on this vest, when you get in a patrol vehicle and you put on your seatbelt. Is there anything that's gonna, like, you're trying to jump out of the car or whatever. Is there gonna be anything that's gonna kind of hold you back?
That's what, that's why we would have to meet with, you know, I think most police departments carry a radio. They'll carry maybe possibly a taser and some cuffs. And that's it, to minimize. You know, it's just heavy stuff that we wanna get on there. I don't wanna look like J.I. Joe. I honestly don't wanna come out there and my vest is out here because I got so many gadgets on.
Right.
I'm not a gadget officer. I never have been a gadget officer. I don't believe in the latest and the greatest. I think minimizing is the best thing. But we are willing to come to the city and say, what will you allow us to put on this vest? Just give us permission to carry the vest.
So, so everybody on each shift will be wearing the same uniform?
It'll be uniform.
With the vest and everything?
Yes.
But some guy's not gonna say, well, I don't wanna buy it and I'm not gonna wear it?
Well, one officer could say, I don't wanna wear it. And then, you know, he would have to wear whatever uniform. I know that the chief's put out saying that we're gonna do another committee. So whatever that uniform the committee comes out with, if they come out and say, hey, we're gonna wear polyester, we're gonna wear a polycotton. And that's what you're allowed, you would be given a choice. The vest would just be one more choice. It's not, you are obligated to buy it, you have to buy it. It's not, it's not on the chief, hey, you know, I'm gonna wear it because I wanna wear it. It's just another choice. And it's up to the officer to decide which uniform he wants to wear, as long as it's in that...
As long as the whole squad wears the same thing, right? Because you gotta be uniform.
No. And right now, at the current, under the current directive we have, nobody wears the same uniform. Everybody wears a different versions. I wear the version with the patch. There's officers who actually wear the polyester like the chief is wearing. So some officers might wear that uniform, some officers might wear this uniform. And that's because we were given choices.
So you already have a choice?
Yes. We're just adding, trying to add one more choice to the, to the thing. And I think that it's, as far as looks, it doesn't matter. It's just how we present and carry ourselves.
So, do you make that directive, chief?
Yes, I do.
Whoever wants to wear his uniform or your uniform, they could wear it or...
Yes, I do. We give them an option, but it has to be options that are regulated by my office. And those are not part of the contract.
Actually, the baseball cap that the chief said we're allowed to wear, it's on our contract. And the only reason we're allowed to wear caps is because it's on our contract. The nylon gear, it's on our contract. If it wasn't for the fact that we put it on our contract, we wouldn't be allowed to wear nylon. We'd have to wear leather.
On the contract, the smoky hat?
No, sir. Some, a couple of chiefs ago, and I'm not sure which ones, they stopped buying them when we hired officers. So now we're doing that again, but we're, there's a lot of officers that don't have them. But we're going back to those again.
Okay, go ahead.
So if, if the vests stay on the, on the contract, chief. Ultimately, at the end of the day, you have control anyways of when they wear those vests. Am I, is this correct?
No. Once they're on the contract, they're on the contract.
And then they can wear it whenever they...
They can wear it whenever they want.
Okay. Officer, I imagine that what you want is just to make sure you get those vests, right?
We want the vests. We've been trying for nine years. It's a load-bearing vest. The city is big into health prevention. You know, there was, you guys came up with this thing where if you didn't get your blood pressure, if you didn't get your weight, you didn't get all this stuff done. You know, your health insurance went up because it was preventative health, right? So if we get into a load-bearing vest, we're preventing from the future officers having the back pain that the chief has, the back pain that I have. We're looking to prevent that.
Yeah. I agree with that because I went through it and every time I put that vest on, my back pain would go away, so it doesn't...
Councilman Diaz, if you don't mind me asking a question, when you were wearing this vest, what were you doing, sir?
I was driving a truck with fuel or ammo or C4 plastic explosive through the battlefields of Iraq.
But it was a military operation?
It was a military operation, but I didn't, I didn't put a lot of stuff on it. I just had four ammunition magazines and that was it. And then I had the rifle on the side.
Just so you know, when I started the academy, we were told this is a paramilitary-like environment. We have chiefs, we have ranks, the military has ranks. If we wanna get away from the military, we should do away with all ranks.
I strongly believe in a uniform. And when I see officers that don't look uniform, I don't like that, okay? And sometimes I see some of you wearing different uniforms. And I don't know who came up with that idea, when. That is not a uniform.
Well, that's the directive we were given in 2013.
Yeah.
That wasn't me.
That's what I'm saying. I, I, I believe that everybody should wear a uniform, you know. When I see a DPS officer in uniform and I look around and I see another one, he looks the same. Then I look around and I see another one, he looks the same. They are all in uniform. But sometimes I look out the window and look at you guys. Some have cargo pants, some have this. And I say, well, that's not a uniform. It's probably almost the same color. But it's not.
Well, DPS has different uniforms as well.
Sometimes I see them with a dark shirt and light-colored pants. I don't know who came up with that idea.
Well, that's on, that's on that officer because his uniform is too faded. And that is up to that officer to actually purchase new uniforms and buy new uniforms. Which then again falls on the supervisor to hold the officers under his command accountable for his uniform.
That's what I'm saying. A uniform is a uniform. I'm sorry, Victor, but I, I agree with the chief.
And that's fine.
The chief should have the authority to be able to say, if you guys buy a vest, he shouldn't be the one to say, you know, when to wear it. Instead of, instead of some of them showing up with vests and not showing up with vests. You're gonna have a combination every day. And I'm sorry, but that's, but it's up to the members of the council.
Well, I thank you for your time.
I got one more, one more.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Purchase with regulations.
Well, being that the officers are allowed to purchase at their own cost. I think they should be able to buy the vest with, at their own cost. And the chief delegate how they're, when and how they're gonna wear them.
But that's what he's trying to do.
Giving them, giving them. But this, if, if, if they are allowed to purchase the vest, they will have the vest. And make the stipulation that the chief has the power to allow when and how. And if everybody's gonna wear the vest at the same time.
But that's, that's...
That's already under policy, Councilman. So, I mean, all I'm saying is that this has no place in the contract. That's, that's an interdepartmental and my decision. And, and, you know, it's not something that, that we should bring up to you to make operational decisions for any individual department. Again, there's a lot of departments that are using it, but a lot of departments are on the border and they don't have the same issues that we do. So that's, that's all I'm saying is do not take that authority away from me because then I can't control that.
And honestly, when I saw this on the agenda, I said, what is it doing on my desk?
It shouldn't even be there.
No, it shouldn't be something that we decide on. It should be done by you as a director. And if it gets any further, it should be a John's Day, it's not my, or not the members of the council. You know, we're discussing something that you should bring to us a union contract that's already been passed and approved by you. And negotiations with you. Where shouldn't be a negotiating contract.
And everything else, Mr. Mayor, everything else in the contract was discussed and agreed upon. This is the only thing, but my thing, it was a moot point because it has no place in the contract. But everything else, as far as to the representatives from the NPOA that sat down with us, along with Robert. I mean, we, we agreed and we compromised and we came to a conclusion of this is what's gonna happen. However, it's all coming in under this vest, which should be regulated by my office and not a contract.
That's, that's what I believe in. So let's not, let's not beat this anymore. You know, let's make a decision. How do we vote on this, Mr. Mayor?
I guess we're looking for if anybody wants to make a motion. And how they wanna present the motion. Do you wanna present the motion in favor of the article as submitted by the union? I think that's what's written here. And so if anybody is willing to say, I move to approve the agreement with the article as submitted by the union, vote on that? And if that carries, and that carries, but if not...
Or do we ex...
Mr. Mayor?
Can we exclude 11-8 until they compromise?
Mr. Mayor? You want to go ahead, Jeff?
We just heard tonight that 17-3 and 19-1 are a moot point. The union just agreed in front of Mayor and Council and in front of staff. That 19.3, which is the court pay, that they will, they're, they're, they're willing to accept straight overtime for it. Instead of the guaranteed three hours for just showing up. They agreed that the service ring was not appropriate. So that will be stricken from the contract. The only thing that's in dispute in our ordinance on union negotiation offers, directs us. That if we cannot come to an agreement on something and there's an impasse declared. That is presented for Mayor and Council for their ultimate decision on it, and that's what's happening tonight. Staff is recommending that you pass this contract, which all the other articles have been agreed to by the chief. And by administration, except for 11.8. If we can recap, 11.8 is an opportunity for each individual member of the police department to go purchase their own type of vest. Which is in here, which I don't think, I mean, they should be able to do that regardless, right? Then, we shouldn't be able to tell them what they can't go buy. But what the chief is telling you, and what I agree with the chief, is that the uniform and the use of the uniform. And the type of uniform that his officers are gonna wear is a decision that the chief wants to reserve the right to make. You've heard the chief say, he would support that type of a vest to be worn on certain occasions. But not at the officer's discretion. He wants to have the discretion to have uniformity within his departments. And at least I agree with him, but there is an impasse and we bring it to Mayor and Council for their decision on that.
So, Mayor, with that explanation, and I appreciate that very detailed explanation from the city manager. I guess maybe in a two-step, say, do you want to include this article in the agreement? And then after you make that vote, then you decide to approve the agreement or not? Does that sound like the right way to do it?
That sounds like it.
Yeah, because how much are you gonna vote on the impasse?
Well, you have the other...
You gotta have a vote one way or the other.
Or you have the other changes to...
Just vote on the impasse, then you can vote on the agreement.
We want it or we don't want it?
Right.
Okay. All right. We have a motion. Because we're gonna have to make a motion on the impasse.
Well, do you, and I guess you can frame the motion either way, to not include that language or to include the language. As proposed by the union. Because not having that language means you're going to take the position as presented by the chief.
Okay. You heard the motion.
Is that right, chief?
That's correct.
You don't want that language in there.
You don't want it.
No, I don't want it in there. I want it stricken.
So...
Okay, you heard the motion.
So let's say, the motion is to...
To remove 11.8?
We're gonna vote on that.
Remove 11...
Right. Motion would be to not include the union language. 11.8.
Okay. All right. You got it?
And the other two?
The other two are...
They're drawn. They're drawn?
Doesn't make a difference.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion.
You have a motion?
You have a...
Second?
Second. Okay. We're gonna vote on this real call.
Who made the motion?
I know who seconded, but who made the motion?
Mr. Diaz.
Mr. Diaz.
I made the motion. I made the motion.
Clarifying it.
I made the motion, I made the motion to remove 11.8.
I'll go second it, will you?
Okay.
All right. And this is for, I know, I...
11.8, no?
11.8. Get confused. And that's why I don't like negotiating union stuff. This isn't on my desk. Okay. Start with me.
Yes, sir. You, Mr. Mayor?
No.
So you moved not to, not to remove it?
To remove it or not to remove it?
Yes.
What was it?
To remove it.
Remove it.
To remove it.
So I...
Yes.
Okay.
See, I'm confused now.
A yes...
That's why motions in the negative are difficult.
A yes vote, a yes vote will not include 18.1 in your next consideration for the contract.
Correction, 11.8, 11-8.
11.8.
11.8, yes.
Not 18.8.
Thank you.
Don't say anything else.
Yep.
Yes. It's been taken care of, sir. You get a yes. Ms. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Malonado?
Yes.
Mr. Bonilla?
Yes.
Mr. Bajorcas?
Hi.
Ms. Montiel?
Hi.
Now to vote on the agreement.
Okay, now to vote on that.
So we, the council has, has decided that the disputed language of Article 11-8 is not part of this agreement. So now the agreement itself is before the council to approve or not approve.
So move to approve.
And that's been moved in, in seconded at the beginning of the discussion.
But this is for the agreement of the...
Of the agreement as for the, for the union contract?
The whole thing, for the remainder of the agreement.
The whole thing, yes.
We thought...
So, this is for the whole thing now. We, we resolved the dispute. Now the agreement is in front of council.
This real call is...
Okay, let me make my note. Mayor?
Yes.
Mrs. Lopez?
Yes.
Mr. Diaz?
Yes.
Mr. Malonado?
Yes.
Mr. Bonilla?
Yes.
Mr. Bajorcas?
Hi.
Ms. Montiel?
Hi.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor.
Consideration possible action of order 2021-08-047. An order of the Council of City of Magals approving an extension with the International Association of Firefighters Local 2763. Until negotiations are finalized.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You don't wanna do this again. So we like, we want the opportunity to try to finalize a contract with the fire department. And bring, bring back to you a contract that both admin and the fire chief can present to you unanimously for your approval. In order to accomplish that, staff is requesting more time to negotiate that contract.
Just wanna tell you, Jeff, in my first term and in this term, this is the first time that I had to act like I'm negotiating a contract with unions. You should just bring me the contract that you feel comfortable with, you feel comfortable with, the chief feels comfortable with, that chief feels comfortable with. And then we should only say, yes, because you're out. But we shouldn't be negotiating. Because then we start negotiating union contracts.
Ay, ay, ay.
No, you're gonna have to say this. No. No, that's, we just bring it to us. So I'm glad you're gonna work on this one until you finalize and bring something back to us. Thank you for your...
In one month.
Okay, all in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You were trying?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
By next meeting?
Yes.
So it's finalized?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay, okay, we're seeing if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, pause. Yes, aye. Okay, number 11. Mayor and, and council report on current events. I'm gonna go first on this one.
Mr. Travers, welcome to city council. You missed breakfast, you missed dinner.
Okay, July 2nd, I had a meeting with Senator Kelly and other local elected officials on July 4th. Both of July fireworks spectacular, very nice, even though outside from the top of BFW, uh, I had a big time up there, Councilman.
Absolutely, great time.
July 8th, Zoom meeting with CBP regarding possible border port opening. Uh, and as you can see, it wasn't. Uh, Nogales international interview regarding various topics. July 12th, Arizona Public Media interview regarding port restrictions and their impact on local economies. July 14th, a Sentinel interview regarding IDWC awards contract. New, the same date, News 4 interview regarding IDWC and KAGUN 9 also interview regarding IDWC. July 15th, we had the employees award ceremony. July 15th, on the same date, interview podcast with an independent journalist regarding border and immigration issues. Same date, Zoom meeting with Magalos Sonora Presidente Leg Jim. Uh, July 15th, Grupo Millenio interview regarding border closure, uh, effects. July 16th, meeting with Nat Bank regarding infrastructure projects in Nogales. July 16th, KAGUN 9 interview regarding using federal aid to help local economy rebound. July 21st, KAGUN 9 interview regarding border closure extension. Uh, same date, Channel 12 News, uh, interview regarding border restriction extension. July 21st, again, the same date, Zoom meeting regarding IOI sewer line project. July 30th, meeting with, uh, Dr. Eric Paredes. July 30th, the same date, gave opening remarks at the First Autism Bionational Conference. Same date, meeting with Sherb Hathaway. Same date, meeting with UVA Technology Consultant Support Team. Okay?
Your next question.
Okay, we'll, through the mayor's office with Mr. Bonillas and I, figure out the yearly calendar of events, and right now we're working towards a Fiesta de Patres event, which is gonna be September 18th. Uh, we're almost there. I hope, uh, we get everything on time and the flyer is almost done so that we can start with all the invitations to the public and the media and everything.
Thank you. Councilman.
Also, uh, 4th of July was a great success. We watched, uh, 4th of July from, from BFW, which was great. Uh, I also participated in the meeting with, uh, Mary Leg Juan Jim across the line. I, I went up to his office and, and met with him and, and Vicenciado Davila. Also, uh, I believe we're having a housing next Wednesday.
Yes.
So next Wednesday, we're gonna be giving five awards. One EMT, one firefighter, and three police officers. So that will be next, next, uh, next Wednesday at, at our 3 o'clock, the housing meeting. We'll be giving out, uh, those are through the BFW, so we'll be issuing out those. I've been riding them around my car forever, so, so we're gonna give them out. And, uh, we're starting our new program for Police Officer of the Year, Firefighter of the Year, and EMT of the Year. So I need the police chief and the fire chief to start looking for, for the qualified applicants for the BFW, uh, Officer of the Year, EMT, and Firefighter of the Year. So we'll be, I'll be working with you guys on that. So, thank you very much.
Alright, well, baseball month was over. Uh, July was a very bus- busy, uh, month for me with Little League. I was in prison on the July meeting because I was at a tournament final. Uh, I wanna, first of all, thanks, Mr. Travers and your crew. Uh, thank you for everything you guys did, you know. It's been, for all your crew and your time and giving, uh, BB some time also to help me empire because of all the time changes that we had because of rain and all that. You know, it would have been pretty much impossible. You know, I'd like to thank mayor and council for all your support with Little League and the tournaments. Like I said earlier, you know, we had approximately close to 11, 12 teams stay in town. Some stayed as long as five, six days and, uh, there were bumps and hassles with the mother nature, but we got them through. Chief and, uh, both chiefs says, uh, thank you. We did have an incident with one of the empires getting hit and little things like that. Chief, uh, thank you for all your support. Mr. Bermonis also, thank you for all your support, uh, with, with the tournaments. Actually, we had, uh, one of your employees, a kid playing in, in one of the tournaments. And two of Mr. Bermonis and the other tournament, so it was nice having, uh, you know, collaboration and, and, and participation with your own staff, kids playing in, in it. And then, uh, basically, you know, we, Nogales did win, uh, the 50-70 tournament and, uh, we're runner-ups on the junior state tournament, but, uh, it was a great, great tournaments all, all around. I know, right now we're busy, uh, we started softball this, this week and, uh, slow pitch softball. They're starting at, uh, they're playing up at Fleschers, uh, and Little League will continue, will continue back in, uh, September 7th, and we're already talking about times and all that. But, um, it was great. And that's about it, thank you.
Councilman Bonilla?
We had a great 4th of July. Had the, uh, privilege of, of, of doing the music for the, for the July. We did something that we had never done for the City of Maguas, and that is, um, transmit the music, uh, for the fireworks, and I think that we should, you know, in the future, keep that going because there's a lot of people that, that just look at the fireworks and, and, um, they don't, they don't have the music and, you know, nowadays it can either go via internet or on the actual radio. And I, I really liked that, that, um, that opportunity to be the first time that, that we did it. I mean, there's some little quirks that we need to fix, but not, not, not big things. Overall, it was a great success. Uh, yesterday I was, um, spent most of the day, uh, talking to this gentleman by the name of Mike Townsend. He's the head of, of the PSPRS, uh, for the state of Arizona. I've, I've learned a lot, and I think that since we're gonna have anyways a discussion session, we should have invited him. Also, um, I am, I know that we discussed, Councilman, that by Friday I'll be done with the sponsors. However, uh, two of them put me for Tuesday and, and I want for, for Wednesday. So I'm gonna have to sort of wait, uh, on them. I can't really push them because, uh, I just don't wanna push them. So I'm gonna have to wait till next week, but everything is moving along, even though with the, with the changes that we had to make, uh, everything is, is moving along for the September 18th.
Councilman Bohorquez?
Okay, uh, July went, went too fast and it rained almost every day, so, you know, there was not, not a lot we could do. Uh, I watched the 4th of July on, on John's, uh, Facebook page, so that was nice, good work, John. And I also, I also attended the, the 95th birthday for, uh, Mr. Villegas at the, at the Bowman Facility. And there was a, a lot of people from, uh, from, uh, different agencies, the Sheriff Department, MPD, Border Patrol, the VFW was there. And, uh, it was, it was really nice, he's well deserved, and, uh, and it rained that day too, so. That's all.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it did rain that day. Also, um, welcome, Brinny. And, um, and I also wanna welcome all the new employees. I've seen a couple of new hires and also the employees that are out there, um, repairing and fixing all the streets, Mr. Resinas, you have a hardworking crew, and all the city, uh, employees for their hard work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and before, I almost forgot, uh, the September meeting, John? We're gonna move it to the 8th, just so that, you know, because, uh, we're gonna be, uh, at the, at the event. That's gonna be from the 3rd, from the 31st to the 3rd of September.
I had a, I had a couple.
Needs to say sometimes. Yeah, so, yeah, so just, so, so you know that we're... So if you guys show up on the 1st, we're not gonna be here?
Then I would have to present?
No, no, you, you don't have to.
So, Ms. Mayor, we'll, we'll move the, the September meeting from the 1st to 8th, and then if there's a housing meeting on that month, we'll move it to the 15th. So those will just be pushed back a week because of the, the season.
We'll do that, alright, thank you. And, uh, so on our future agenda items, I only have one thing, John, that we need to... I don't know if I'm confused or not, were you gonna bring something to us about the, the construction contract or something for the bank or, would you, we gonna do something at the end of the month?
No.
What, yes, go ahead, John, just, just to make sure.
Ms. Mayor, I'll, I'll, on the next meeting, I'll bring you an update on where we're at at the bank.
Okay, alright, just, that's all, I just wanna make sure that we, we keep on track on that so that we can.
Okay. Yes, sir, I'll bring that, I'll bring that at next meeting, Ms. Mayor.
And then another thing, uh, see, we can schedule that study session we talked about with, uh, PSPRS, you know, and try, uh, we can schedule, uh, that, that study session for that, that day. The September date, and, and most likely we're gonna have to do a study session earlier. Unless, unless that person that comes in, whoever does the presentation, uh, with Finance Department, and, and then if you can, uh, figure out exactly what time and, and the length of the, of the meet, that if we can do it at 4 o'clock or we can do it at 5 o'clock or whatever, you know, so that wouldn't, it won't interfere with a 6 o'clock meeting.
So, Ms. Mayor, maybe I can make a suggestion on that? What, well, what I think would work best for you would to have a study session, um, on the 8th and try to bring in Mr. Townsend from PSPRS, who will identify what the City of Maguas's problem looks like, and once we can grasp what the problem is, then we can have a following study session on how to address the problem. So I, I think our best, our, our, uh, our best use of our time is to have a study session, bring in PSPRS, identify what the problem is, how we got there, how we can not get it any worse or what we can do to, to better it. And then once we totally understand what it is, then we can bring in another study session to see how to deal with it. In other words, are we gonna float bonds, are we gonna sell city property, whatever? No, but we, we can have that type of a conversation. So I think a two-step thing was better than just trying to bring everybody at the same time.
Okay, great idea.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Is anybody else having agenda on, gentlemen, go ahead, Chris.
Uh, Mayor, I've been contacted also by, um, the Fiesta Baseball, you know, the Mexican League. If they're allowed, they're supposed to tell me, uh, next week if they're, they're gonna give them a cer- a special permit to come, uh, across this year. But they're, they're.
Yes, good luck.
They're, they're waiting on, uh, on the, on that. Uh, if we were able to do it, uh, they would want, uh, the two games here in, uh, in October. So, so hopefully, you know, I've been.
Tell him there's no firework thing else.
So, Mr. Malonado, do you want me to put a discussion item on the next agenda, reference Fiesta Baseball?
Yeah, for September 8th.
September 8th, the day of the, the meeting?
The meeting, yes, sir. Okay.
Anybody else?
Discussion, so we can start, uh, at least start somewhere on, on Terrace Avenue. What we're gonna do or not do, or, but we gotta start also. It's part of the, uh, plan for downtown, so see what we can, discussion out.
Study session on that?
Study session, yeah.
Okay, study session on downtown.
Uh, now, could you repeat that for me? I didn't, I didn't get it.
Study session on, on the pedestrian waterway for Terrace Avenue.
If I, uh, this is a question to Mr. Kissinger. I have a question for you, Mr. Kissinger. So, um, who and when will the Economic Development, um, meetings start getting going? Who's initiating all that?
Would you like me to put that on the agenda for discussion for next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I, I will, so you can discuss. Ms. Mayor? I just have a, I just have a few things I'd like to cover very quickly, Ms. Mayor. Uh, just to remind everybody that, uh, next Wednesday, the 11th is the NHA meeting, um, at 3 o'clock. Uh, on the 13th, I'm not planning on being in the office, but I'll be in town. You can get ahold of me, anything you need. Let me see, on the 25th, we have that update for the city manager search where they're going to discuss with you candidates, that will be at 10 o'clock. On September 1st, we're moving the meeting because we'll all be in Phoenix, and on September 29th, sometime during the day, the city's planning on holding, uh, the Officer Memorial that they typically hold at the county complex for the officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty. Uh, having that event in the downtown by the Placita, so.
September 29th?
29th.
What's the date we have the State of the City address?
28th, no.
28th, is it? Oh, yeah, that's right, we, we go ahead, for Thursday.
Uh-huh, Tuesday.
No, for the State of City address, at Thursday, isn't it?
Tuesday, we discussed it Tuesday, 28th.
Oh, okay.
Unless you are planning change.
No, so, so, I'm telling you, I'm all confused.
We got your government.
I got so much planned.
You've got the twisties, Mayor.
Yeah. These guys have me all with their, with their planning and everything else.
The 28th is the State of the City?
Yeah.
On the Tuesday, and then Wednesday is that memorial.
Mr. Kissinger, can?
September 11th is on there too.
Yeah.
September 11th, we're also having a.
Has Cory, Cory said anything about, about opening? The regular hours at Mariposa?
No, but the 29th is what? A memorial?
Mr. Malonado, I haven't heard anything, but I can definitely, uh, reach out to them and get back to you.
Today with the school, it was felt. I heard there was felt, uh, you know, since the top line, uh, the Mariposa doesn't open till 8. There was humongous lines on the, on the.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Oh, thanks.
So I hope they consider, at least through the school reasons.